Public hearing. Orders number eighteen dash oh nine. An ordinance to approve and ratify the inclusive of a site location in Marlboro County in Multicity County in Dr. Martin Green, Marlboro County, and other matters related to second reading. If anyone wished to comment on ordinance number dash eighteen dash oh nine. If not, I declare public hearing. Orders number eighteen oh nine closed. One B. Orders number eighteen dash ten, an ordinance to amend ordinance number eighteen dash oh four, Dalton County FYI eighteen nineteen budget ordinance for supplementary appropriations to the library fund received and spent. State library grant funds for Dalton County library system and established the fact that this ordinance is second reading. Anyone wish to speak on ordinance number eighteen dash ten? If not, I declare ordinance number eighteen dash ten closed. One C. Orders number eighteen dash eleven. Orders to develop a multi-county park in Lee County authorizing the execution and delivery of agreement governing multi-county park authorization, inclusive of certain property located in Dalton County in the multi-county park authorizing the execution of the end of government agreement and other matters related to thereof. Anyone wish to speak to ordinance number eighteen dash eleven? If not, I declare ordinance number eighteen dash eleven closed. We will call the order. Him and occasion and pledge, Mr. Douglas. The token we do.
Father God, we long want to thank you, Lord. Last night rest and the family of church has wakened up with love this morning. And Father, we just want to thank you, Lord, for starting us on a new day and closing now right now. And we ask you, little Lord, to come this over here, bless each and every one that has attended there, Lord. And Father God, we're going to ask to bless us the one that could attend and do not attend. And Father God, we're asking you today to go with the refoundings, go with the homes, hospitals. Father, you know that you're everyone, sometimes we ones. But you can pick up when no man can, you can put down when no man can. And Father, we're asking you to tuck it over so that they can see their light and get there. And Father God, we're asking you, little Lord, to go with your foreign country. We're asking you to tuck our boys in and give them some strength and foresight of seeing them coming home one day. And Father, we're asking you, little Lord, to lead us and guide us to this meeting in your name, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Personal appearances we had none. We'll go to the consent agenda.
Move to accept items six A and six B. Add information on consent agenda.
To the second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye have. Approval of minutes. Joint meeting of Dalton County Municipal Council, County Government, Board of Education and Legislature delegation is July thirtieth, twenty eighteen.
Move for approval of minutes at the joint meeting in Dalton County.
To the second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed, aye have. Seventh B. Regular meeting, August thirteenth, twenty eighteen.
Move for approval of minutes at regular meeting of August thirteenth.
To the second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed, aye have.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I would like to move the agenda, add it to the agenda, emergency ordinance number eighteen slash thirteen in reference to the hurricane.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Let me read it here. Emergency ordinance number eighteen dash thirteen. Before add of eight P M September tenth, twenty eighteen, the National Weather Service was predicting severe weather caused by hurricane ploughings for the Dalton County area and. Before add, severe weather associated with hurricane ploughings contributed to the determination by Dalton County Council at a regular scheduled meeting that the imminent threat of weather emergency warranted declaration of state emergency in Dalton County. And whereas for protection of life and property and for the effective movement of law enforcement and emergency service personnel, Dalton County Council finds that government help and state considerations also may warrant establishment of a temporary curfew during the weather emergency end. Whereas the governor of the state of South Carolina has declared that a state of emergency existed in South Carolina now therefore be ordained by the governing body of Dalton County, South Carolina, the Dalton County Council there. Section one, curfew may be established if necessary during hurricane-pluished state of emergency in Dalton County. Section two, the curfew may be ordered by the county administrator or the sheriff of Dalton County. Section three, the emergency ordinance shall become effective upon adoption by Dalton County Council and remain effective until rescinded otherwise amended and/or the state of South Carolina state of emergency is rescinded. Section four, the penalty for violation of this order shall be up to two hundred dollars or thirty days incarceration. Adopted meeting duly assembled this tenth day of September twenty eighteen.
Chairman, I move the approval of the ordinance.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, I move to amend the ordinance. It's not eight o'clock at night yet, therefore I will change it to five P M instead of eight P M right there in the first line.
Second the amendment.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye have.
Mr. Chairman, at this time I've moved to amend the agenda to bring forward resolutions and executive session due to the nature of executive session pending ordinance number eight B.
Mr. Chairman, that's out of order. We're on the main motion for the emergency ordinance.
Did we just budget?
We just budgeted on the amendment.
All right, what else?
All right.
You have for the main motion.
Main motion as amended.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman. Um, I, I, I have some concerns about the amendment. And I'd like to see that covered in the amendment. And I can imagine, I want to, this, this two hundred dollars, that concerns me, number one, the amount. And this amendment does not provide any provisions for our homeless population in Dalton County. We had some problems with that in the past with storms. And perhaps we could get some help from our county attorney. And maybe hear from the rest of my colleagues with regard to these two concerns.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Um, I understand your concern about those that are homeless, and I think those probably, those people would be in the shelter if they're not. Um, I think those, I think, I think the sheriff of Dalton County would have enough sense to know those who were out playing around and those who weren't. But the ordinance does provide that the fine would be up to two hundred dollars. It could be zero and/or thirty days incarceration. That could always be a zero to thirty-two. So, I would leave that discretion of the honorable sheriff to make that decision, but I think, I think, I think we would be all right, Ms. Nicholson, but I understand your concern.
Yes, that's what, that's, I, I just wanted to make sure these, my two concerns were noted for the right.
Aye. Dean?
Aye.
All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All in favor? Aye have.
Mr. Chairman, at this time I've moved to amend the agenda to bring forward resolutions and executive session due to the nature of executive session and ordinance eight B.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All in favor? Aye have.
We have resolutions.
Resolutions.
Mr. Chairman, this time with great pride from county council, I'd like to read resolution number six ninety-three, recognition of Dalton County Deputy Justin Taylor. Whereas on July ninth, twenty eighteen, Dalton County Deputy Justin Taylor was awarded the twenty eighteen South Carolina Sheriff's Association Deputy of the Year Award. Whereas Deputy Justin Taylor went above and beyond the call of duty during incidents that occurred on September twelfth, twenty seventeen, and January second, twenty eighteen. Whereas on September twelfth, twenty seventeen, just Deputy Justin Taylor went above and beyond the call of duty when he responded to a gunshot victim who was fighting for his life. Deputy Justin Taylor, a certified paramedic upon arrival, quickly assessed the scene, rendered medical assistance to stop the bleeding until EMS crews arrived on scene. His quick reaction and proper use of his medical abilities saved the vic, the life of the victim. Whereas on January second, twenty eighteen, preceding a major one-car multiple fatality traffic collision, Deputy Justin Taylor began resuscitating and providing medical assistance to those small children struggling to live. As the collision scene became more turbulent, Deputy Justin Taylor was observed personally carrying wounded and injured children on several occasions to the ambulance for immediate medical attention. Once the collision scene was managed and immediate life-saving steps were rendered, Deputy Justin Taylor then assisted the county EMS by driving the ambulance to the hospital while the ambulance crew began immediate life-saving measures to preserve the life of a child. Now therefore be resolved by the governing body of Dalton County, South Carolina, the Dalton County Council to hereby recognize and commend Deputy Justin Taylor for his willingness to preserve, defend, and protect human life at every cost. Be it further resolved that Dalton County Council presents this resolution of appreciation to Deputy Justin Taylor whose actions embody the Dalton County Sheriff's Office core values of integrity, accountability, and selfless service. Approved immediately July, duly assembled in this tenth day of September twenty eighteen. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of resolution number six ninety-three.
Second. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye have.
It's my honor to give you this and thank you for what you do for Dalton County and just go above and beyond the duty. And Dalton County appreciates what you said, which we had, and we do have a lot of people who need more like you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Resolution six ninety-four. A resolution authorizing the executive of a law enforcement assistance agreement between the town of Lamar and the Dalton County Sheriff's Office for the provision of a sheriff deputy to exercise the administrative duties of the police chief of the town of Lamar.
I move for approval of resolution number six ninety-four.
Any discussion?
Question. Is it, is this a, is this a temporary thing?
Yeah.
Yeah. I disagree.
Any other questions?
Chief, the chief retired. Chief Williams retired, and he was the interim, and Mayor Darnell called and asked whether we had the administrative duties of the police chief of them and their police officers that work at the town until she chooses another chief.
Plus, we're going to reimburse.
Plus, during that six-month period of time, town Lamar will reimburse the county for the expenses of our office down there. So it's only a temporary thing, which can be extended if council so agrees that she hasn't found one within six months. But the whole idea is, I think it ends up, which costs like February the eighth or tenth or something like that next year, that's six months, hopefully she'll find someone by then.
You got enough men to run a unit of sixty?
I got a couple on my staff. As cops work up the agreement, if you put a certified officer, doesn't say I'd make, make, put my chief over there or anything like that, I can have a certified officer. But it'll be one that's capable of handling, put one on my staff. That way they're, they're already exempt, and that can, I can work them on weekends if I need to.
And we're being reimbursed, huh?
Yeah, we're being reimbursed. Put it all to us out.
Any other questions? If not, let. You good?
Aye.
Thomas?
Aye.
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 Aye have.
Mr. Chairman, at this time I've moved that we have an executive session for discussion of proposed contractual arrangements regarding Darlington, Lee County, multi-county industrial park.
I move.
Or second. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye have.
Mr. Chairman, at this time I've moved that we go into executive session for discussion of proposed contractual arrangements regarding Darlington, Lee County, multi-county industrial parks with members of council, our county administrator, our attorney.
All in favor? Say aye.
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 We're saying it.
Ms. Thomas, do you second?
I did.
All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
No action taken? We'll move on to ordinance eight A. David, will you read that?
Sure. Ordinance number eighteen dash oh nine, an ordinance to approve and ratify the inclusion of a site located in Marlboro County in a multi-county industrial park in Greenfield, Marlboro County. Another matter related there to second reading, page forty-five.
Is the motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye have. Speed it, can you read that?
Ordinance number eighteen dash ten, an ordinance to amend ordinance number eighteen dash oh four, Dalton County FYI, FYI eighteen nineteen budget ordinance for supplemental appropriations to the library fund received and spent, state library grant funds for Dalton County library system and established the fact that this ordinance is second reading. Page twenty-three.
Any motion?
I move.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Say aye. Opposed, aye have. Douglas?
Order number eighteen dash eleven, ordinance to develop a local county park for Lee County authorizing the inclusion of certain property located in Dalton County, the local county park authorizing the inclusion of. And, and government agree, and other matters related there.
Move, carryover.
Do you second?
Second.
All in favor? Say aye. Move? Aye have.
Item eight D. Ordinance number eighteen dash twelve, to amend the allocation of multi-county park revenues within Dalton County under the agreement governing the Dalton Florence Industrial Park dated April twenty-first, twenty sixteen, with respect to project Watauga and authorizing other related matters. First reading, no action taken.
Committee reports, none of other items, appointed board, and commissions. Carryover. Fine. Ms. Flowers is carryover. Ms. Nicholson?
Mine's carryover.
Ms. Brown is not here. Ms. Coker?
Oh, yes, let's carry over mine.
New personal standby letter of credit for L K TK Enterprise Incorporated for Stokes Place Southern Vision, page three.
Move the approval.
Do you second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye have. Eleven C. Sole source purchase of fifteen cents of personal protection equipment, bunker gear, fire district, thirty-three thousand, six fifteen. Any motion?
Move for approval of eleven C.
Second. Just be the second. Okay. Any discussion?
Yes. Is this one of these things they have to stick onto some belt, and that's why we're sole sourcing it, or?
No, my understanding, you want to speak to Chief Flowers?
It's just regional purchasing, the same thing we always deal with with bunker gear. Once we buy it from one organization, we're kind of stuck with, I follow on there. Thank you.
Yes, sir. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye have. Eleven D. Fit contract for paving type B S flat no road using CTC funds. Any motion?
Move the approval.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye have. Twelve. Administrator update.
Well, I don't know if y'all want it since you've already passed the emergency ordinance, but I'll give you a quick update on what we had at five o'clock on the hurricane. You want that, or you want me to skip that?
Well.
I'll give it to you real quick, is why we did the emergency. We expect to see tropical storm force winds even as a five o'clock, these are the five o'clock numbers. Uh, well, that chart's not, that chart's eleven o'clock, but as early as eight P M Wednesday. So we plan no change in county operations on Tuesday and Wednesday. Possible change on Thursday and Friday based on wind speeds and what we get. Here is one of the latest charts we did receive on probability of tropical storm force winds sustained, which means they, they last for at least one minute continuous, not just gusts. And we're somewhere here in this orange, the, maybe the very edge of that red band, so sixty to the eighty percent mark. Now, our emergency operation plan calls for us to pull emergency vehicles off the road with sustained tropical storm force winds. So if we were going to see that, it wouldn't be appropriate if our plan says that we're going to pull emergency vehicles off the road and ask employees to drive back and forth to work. So that's why we still have open that we may not be operating general government services on Thursday or Friday. But all that's dependent on what happens as we go. And then as you move down to the next level of wind speed, we show less probability, this is fifty-eight mile an hour winds. And then when you move on, you're down hurricane-force winds, we're down to less than a thirty percent chance, more likely less than a twenty percent chance of that. And that's wind speed seventy-five miles an hour, or it says. There was about a twenty-mile jog to the north between the eleven o'clock advisory today and the five o'clock advisory, so about twenty miles further north in Wilmington. If it continues that jog, our situation is better and better and better. If it wobbles or jogs back the other way, our situ, situation gets a little bit worse. We are on the south side of the storm, which is where you prefer to be at all times. Uh, the north side of the storm receives stronger winds, wind direction changes at ninety degrees as it passes, plus well more rain and a higher tornado threat. Um, there's the forecast track as of five o'clock this evening showing that coming ashore has a major hurricane. They're still saying it will come ashore as a four and immediately downgrade and work its way down. Um, just another track of the same. Here are rain to, rain total projections as of about five o'clock this afternoon. Our band's somewhere between the two and maximum four inches. If you notice that red just north of the Wilmington area, Wilmington sitting right here on this point, um, coast totals are between ten and fifteen inches, to show again we're much better off on the south side of the storm than we would be on the north side. So while we feel for those up there, we're in a better situation with the track as it stands on this guy. That's the gist of it. There is an employee information line, actually, that's not proposed. Uh, where employees can call in and find out changes been made to schedules. Um, we have a emergency department head meeting and some other sub-meets a day with damage assessment and whatnot. So we're moved into a, an operational phase where public safety certainly ramped up its preparedness and ready to go, and we'll make decisions on Thursday and Friday operations, probably late tomorrow or early Wednesday morning. We want to give employees as much notice as possible, but if it continues to jog off to the north, we'll be waiting for tomorrow afternoon. If it doesn't jog off to the north, we're probably waiting for Wednesday morning to decide about Thursday and Friday. We'll certainly watch the wind speeds, probably within the next twenty-four hours. Now, there's probably all kinds of things on the network news, but we're going to take our information from the National Hurricane Center or the Wilmington, um, Weather Center about wind gusts and what we can expect, but we don't have a real good projection of what I saw there. That's where we are. Now, I need to switch gears real quick. While I'm bringing up this other item, I will tell you that we hope to have those reports back from Michael Baker on courthouse studies. There are some issues with the deliverable, um, so it's not delivered to us as of yet. It will most likely be October meeting before we have a deliverable there. So that's still being held up. I do have for you the audit as of June thirtieth, twenty seventeen. Pass these out ahead of time, we have limited copies here that are already bound. And of course, Finance Director will be posting this to the website. Have you already done that, Chairman, by chance? No? Okay. So as, as I heard Finance Director talk, he will post this tomorrow, certainly after it's been, y'all have received it, it's now public information and finalized. Just to give you a quick idea, just high level, thirty-thousand-foot overview, the Finance Committee, which is three council members, the treasurer, the auditor, and then the administrator being on that, the Finance Director being on that, need to meet and review the audit and look over. But just a high-level overview, here's a fund balance chart that I've been using since we started with budget and whatnot, showing you where your money is, and just a quick overview of fund balance. Fund balance doesn't mean everything, but it's if you're going to go look somewhere, this is the bottom line to go look at real quick. And if you'll notice, starting a few years ago, they started splitting up fund balance. At start with, they just all put it in one big category. Well, it had to be split up undercommitted, assigned, and restricted, and all that type stuff. Last year you had, I'm going to get, I can't see that number. Get my chart. Last year you had approximately two million in assigned, that's a million dollars you put aside specifically for economic development, and a million dollars you put aside specifically for capital projects. And you had ten million, ten point eight million in unassigned, available for whatever you want to assign it to. As of June thirtieth, twenty seventeen, this blue increased from ten point eight to fifteen point eight. There are a number of factors in that, it was changing up how the roads and bridges were managed in two different accounts into one fund, um, that released the money from a roads and bridges fund over to the, um, general fund, and this chart's just for the general fund. But just so you have an idea, you have a very healthy fund balance. You have money that can be used for some capital projects that may need to be looked at, and that's something staff will start looking at to bring forward to over the next six months. Here's a place you can use some of this fund balance so that you don't have to add extra tax relief to fund these capital projects. One other slide is a quick look at some of the other funds that are common that you see in there. Of course, the first one is the increase from last year to twenty seventeen ended. The second was the fire fund, there was a slight increase in the fire fund balance. There was a slight decrease in the new emergency services fund balance, that's as we get that fund going now from one year to the next. Roads and bridges had a, a decrease, but it still has a one point six million dollar fund balance, which is a hundred percent fund balance for the roads and bridges fund. Nothing else with that. Absolutely awesome, we honestly. Library fund balance increased. Emergency telephone fund balance went down slightly, that's because you use some to make some capital creepers inside the, um, nine-one-one center. Again, that's still a one point eight million dollar fund balance, that's actually over a hundred percent fund balance. That one you do maintain higher than thirty-five percent reserve, simply because when you, it's time to change all that equipment out over there, you'll need all that one point eight million dollars to do so, or you'll need a good, bigger than a half dollars to do so. Uh, and then environmental services, and that's not a fund balance, that's a net position because that's proprietary fund, but similarly it increased in its balance available, and then the other government funds made a slight increase. But I tell you all that, that your net position from June thirtieth sixteen to June thirtieth seventeen for your fund balance has improved overall. We expect to see an improvement from seventeen to the June thirtieth eighteen ended that audit has begun. Finance Director has been collecting from all the departments information to prepare. They will come the first week of November? They will come the first week of November to receive the information, and in their email, if I remember correctly, they expect if we present them all the information they requested, they have us audit, and then later, December thirty-first, I believe, will come in. So that is the, what we plan for the So, that is the, what we plan for the June 30th, 2018 audit. We'll have the Finance Committee meet, and then if y'all have any questions or concerns, please don't hesitate. You got a copy of all of the review and ask any question you want. This, ma'am.
For those attending, our councilmen, would you name the, the, the council members?
I'll have to ask Jeanette, Ms. Jeanette, clerk, to tell me who's on that Finance Committee, because off the top of my head, I do not know.
Oh, sure. The Finance Director, the Treasurer.
No, the councilmen.
There's three councilmen.
That's the three councilmen.
I don't know that set. They meet once a year, so.
Yeah, I know, but that needs to be made right.
She may have to look back at all minutes to confirm who's on that committee. We'll bring that forward so it's on the record.
Yeah, because that's really important, that they, they, the citizens need to know what council members are on the finance committee. That's, that's very important.
I like it, I like it. Lewis, Danny, and I say it.
Yeah, I just didn't want to speak without making sure who was appointed that day.
But we, we'll confirm and have it posted for the, the October meeting.
Yes. Thank you.
That's all I have for you.
Questions, comments, members of the council? Mr. Coker?
Just got a question. Um, Michael Baker report will have information about the courthouse to the public before the referendum is voted on.
I don't know, but I know this court, they're going to give a deliverable that we can consider published and filed. But now, the things they were looking at is how much would it take to tear down the courthouse where it sits and rebuild it where it sits? Add to the current structure and modify the current structure and add new to the current structure to give the appropriate space. That's the study that we have part of that's not complete, and the other part of the study was build a new building in the site that's purchased in downtown Darlington and build, either build it all there or build some of it somewhere else, two different structures. But the first part that, the first part that's not complete like it should be is tear down the building, rebuild right where it is big enough, or just add to the building right where it is and remodel the old portion and add new.
I guess that's my concern, the votes, and we should, they should know that, oh, for the votes, not the, I think it's just my personal feeling.
Unfortunately, that wouldn't determine what, until a decision's made on whether you build new, where you build, all this information was to help y'all make that decision, and I don't believe y'all will be able to finalize that decision prior to the voting November. I believe we talked about it, there wouldn't be a final decision on where, um, adding to, build to, the new piece of property over there or the current piece of property until after that referendum passed, whether they authorize the money. If they don't authorize the money, you're highly restricted on what you can do. If they do authorize the money, then you may be able to tear down where it's at and rebuild where it's at, but otherwise, you don't have the funds to do that, not even with the inventory pass, you have to go back to the voting room.
I also wanted to, 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 with our emergency personnel, I would take advantage, have to be safe. The ahs have fallen out.
Thomas?
I just have one question in reference to our emergency planning, weather and so forth. Is there an extra line that comes in for people that want information in reference to who, what, when, where?
There's a public information line, and I don't have that number off the top of my head. Our emergency manager coordinator still got the old phone call. You want to get that number so we can publish it, so they'll have it before we finish? Why don't you just walk back there and ask them all what the public information line is? There's a line that we publish and send out, a press release that they can call for information.
Okay, I, that's one of the, another question in reference to our, our employees, especially those that live out of the area.
Now, our employees all have a number to call. I just wanted to put that out to the public because that line may get inundated. Employees have all been notified of that.
No, I didn't, no, sir. I, that's not what I meant.
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry.
I, working situations, you know, but some of our folks don't live here in the county. You know, the storm is bad. How do, how do we count, stuff like that? They leave early or what?
No, that, well, we would let them leave early if necessary based on the weather condition, but there's also the telephone line for them to call in so they can find out at 5:00 in the morning whether, oh, emergency conditions deteriorate, if you don't have to come into that. That's what the employee information line is for, to keep them abreast as soon as decisions make.
That's the sort of order that we take care of on, too. Ladies got you. Thanks a lot, so I, I'm really concerned. Thank you.
I'll have it, but. They were saying about the emergency people, be safe. Hope we get through it, not get as bad as we think it's going to be, but if it is, I know we can handle it. I appreciate it. Ricky, did you get the number?
It's 398-4448.
398.
843-398-4448. That's the public information line once the EOC's up and operational. Now, that's not managed only for, as they said, every day of the week. Once we go operational Thursday morning, that line will be available for the public. That's the current plan unless the weather conditions change for the EOC to operate seven day and Thursday. There'll be limited capacity.
How much closer do you care? Second. Thank you, Zach.
Aye. Thank you.